Okay, we'll go ahead and take roll call.
All right, Mr. Hilsinger?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Elliott?
Here.
Mr. Sneed?
Here.
Ms. Hancock?
Here.
Ms. Hart?
Here.
Mr. Fagan?
Here.
Mr. Cunningham?
Here.
Okay, so we're showing eight right now. First item, need a motion to accept the minutes from the August 7th executive meeting.
All moved.
Okay.
Discussion, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it eight zero. We have no status sheet, no committee reports, there's no new business petitions to be heard. First item we've got is old business letters for approval. First one's PC 22 dash 23.
So this PC 22, 23, 18 T mobility is a request for a conditional use permit in the NU non-urban district to permit a telecommunications tower along with existing athletic field lighting at, on the west side of Christopher Drive at Dacia Lane. This is a letter of recommendation consistent with the commission's approval from the August executive meeting.
Gary, can you do this? Yeah, I guess. Since you like these.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make a motion.
Do we have a second?
Oh, second.
Discussion, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it eight zero. Next is PC 23 dash 23.
Mr. Hilsinger, I'll note that Mr. Bedell's just joined the meeting.
Okay, we've got nine then, okay.
Good evening, PC 23 dash 23 Aldi USA. As the commission may recall was a request for an amended C8 for 2.59 acres located on the southeast quadrant of Tesson Ferry Road, a town south road and northwest of Old Tesson Road. Your letter of recommendation is mostly similar to the decision that was made on your executive meeting on August 7th with one major change here. As the commission may recall, at the executive meeting on August 7th, you requested the elimination of the 18 parking spaces along Old Tesson Road. Subsequent to the executive meeting, the petitioner reached out to staff and indicated the importance of having those 18 spaces on site and proposed adding a fence along Old Tesson Road. After discussion with staff, the petitioner chose to propose a three and a half foot tall masonry screen wall with brick veneer and provided renderings of this proposed wall. Staff has reviewed the proposed wall and finds it reasonable to meet the needs of screening headlights from the traffic in the parking lot. And staff also believes that the proposed wall looks residential in style and the proposed landscaping is aesthetically appropriate in this area. So at this time, we would like to ask for a motion of approval on the letter of recommendation.
Is that wall the appropriate height that you just showed? Is that about four and a half foot?
I believe that the rendering does show about the three and a half foot tall wall and it is also on the site. They did provide us with a new site development plan indicating that it would be a three and a half foot tall masonry wall with the brick veneer. They also did submit a new landscape plan to us just to provide that information as to the landscaping that would also go around that area.
So the, so the rendering shows both the, what they envisioned the brick wall, stone wall, and the landscaping would be?
Yes.
That is correct. We, we ensured that the rendering matched the landscape plan. This, this does, at, at least a couple of years after full growth, this is what it would look like.
Actually, that's an improvement.
Staff found that our, our primary concern was the casing of light from headlights from the, from the, from the site. And with a three and a half foot tall wall, that will capture the vast majority of vehicle lights when they, when they pull into those spaces and, and staff finds it a reasonable and appropriate solution to the, to the parking issue at that site.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion, we accept this with this change.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Anyone? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it nine zero. And next item is PC 24 dash 23 Aldi Inc.
Good evening, commissioners, this is PC 24 dash 23 Aldi Inc. Request is for a change from the C2 Shopping District to C8 Plan Commercial District and C8 Plan Commercial District to amended C8 Plan Commercial District. The tract size is 4.98 acres on the north of intersection of Old Tesson Ferry Road and Griffin Road and east of Tesson Ferry Road. As you may recall, this site is in South County. The site is outlined in red on the aerial. The letter is consistent with the commission's approval from the August executive meeting with a few minor changes, the most notable being that the petitioner requested that we amend the letter to, instead of saying that the second building had to be contained within the frame of the existing medical office building or the former medical office building, that, that site can be contained within a building of 8,000 square feet. And at this time, I'd like to request a motion.
Okay, do we have a motion?
All moved.
Do we have a second?
Okay.
Discussion. Questions?
Was that the only change? I thought there were some other changes.
There were some other changes, mostly do focusing on design such as changes to the setbacks. This was the one that staff felt was the, the most pertinent to highlight outside of what's in the cover memo and also in featured in the letter recommendation.
And we'll see this again on architectural review.
I guess I just wanted to ask with all the setback changes, because I think it was like every side was setback changes. What was the size of the buildings substantial change with that?
So they were asking for those, those modifications to the setbacks to allow for design flexibility in the future, not because they anticipate the design or the layout of the building to change in a major way, but that way if there was, once they get down into their actual construction drawings, if there was a change of five or 10 feet, they wouldn't have to come back to the planning commission to request an amendment of the ordinance, so because they were relatively minor, we felt they were appropriate to, to modify between the info report to the letter of recommendation here. But they did not indicate a greater building size to go with that.
Okay.
But changing those, changing those allows them to go to a larger building size without coming back.
Is that the square footage requirement inside of the ordinance that keeps the building to a, keeps the building to its proposed size? So the, the intent is just in case the building had to shift ever so slightly within the site, that way we can, you know, and we've had this before where we are extremely, extremely prescriptive to the exact foot and someone has to move it, you know, six inches or 12 inches and they have to come back and go through the whole amendment process. This just gives them that little bit of wiggle room in case there's very minor changes in terms of its exact location.
The overall size is not changing, is that?
Correct.
Correct. And Mr. Hilsinger, to answer your question, the, the site development plan itself will come back for the planning commission's approval since it's a planned commercial district along with the architectural elevations.
Okay, so we'll see this again.
Correct.
Anyone else? Seeing none, we have a motion for approval. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it nine zero. Not ready for action, correspondence none. We'll go to site plans, first one is PC 27 dash seven, David Munganas.
Good evening, PC 27 dash oh seven, David S. F. Munganas is a C8 Plan Commercial District. It's a 13 point 17 acre tract on the southwest quadrant of Manchester Road and Mason Lane. As you can see from the context map, this is in West County and there, the site is outlined in red on the aerial. And this is just architectural elevations for your approval this evening. The majority of the facade is, is staying the same. The only change is the addition of this entry element that we have circled in red. There will be a logo sign added to this element as well, but that is not under review by the planning commission. And so the department is recommending approval.
Okay, we need a motion?
All moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Discussion, questions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it nine zero. Next we've got PC 41 dash 80, St. Andrews Credit Union.
PC 41 dash 80, St. Andrews Credit Union is a C8 Planned Commercial District. It's a 1.3 acre tract on the northeast corner of LeMay Ferry Road and Dumont Place. This site is located in South County and you can see it highlighted in red on the aerial. As you will recall from the request for an amendment to this C8 ordinance earlier this year, they're proposing basically a total redevelopment of this site, which includes a new 11,000 square foot building and parking and then a new curb cut on Dumont Place, which is highlighted in red. So here's the site plan sheet. This is a geometric plan dimensioning the drive aisles and parking spaces. This is the existing conditions. And here are some construction details, the ADA signs and whatnot. This is the landscape plan with kind of a dense landscape buffer yard proposed along the property line. It's the eastern property line adjacent to residentially zoned property. And then here's the lighting plan. There's a requirement for the foot candle levels to be zero foot candles 20 feet from the eastern property line, so from those residentially zoned parcels. And that's denoted in that red line there. So architectural elevations, this shows the trash enclosure, you can see it along the bottom there. And vinyl fence that, there is a fence existing, they're replacing the existing fence along that eastern property line as well. And then the elevations of the building, meeting the, the requirements of the C8 ordinance, which include high quality materials and a high degree of finistration, particularly along the western and eastern elevations. And the department is recommending approval.
Okay, we need a, a motion?
Motion for approval.
Do we have a second?
Okay.
Discussion, questions, anyone? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it nine zero. And then the last item is for the good of the order. Jacob or Melissa?
I will kick it off. So now that we've gotten all of that stuff out of the way, we've got a bunch of for the good of the order for you tonight. The first thing we kind of want to, to share with the commission is the day in the life of the county planner. So we see you guys a lot, I, I think you probably feel you see us a lot. But there is a lot of other work that we do that we want to share with you, especially as we, we come upon the, the comp plan engagement process, facilitation process. I think we're going to see a lot of each other in sort of that other perspective as well. So this is to give you a little bit of, of a taste of what we're doing here all day. So you all are very familiar with, with our work as the staff of the planning commission. So we, we see each other not infrequently down in the chamber, in this, in this video conference setting for the commission to fulfill their role as advisors to the county council on planning and zoning matters. So I won't dive in too much because y'all are the experts as well in the, the work of the planning commission. But related to that, when the planning commission, when the county council adopted the zoning ordinance that we know and love and administer today, essentially what they did is say, any development that is permitted by right per this zoning ordinance where it doesn't have to come before the planning commission can be reviewed and approved by, by the administration, by the staff. So there's a, a whole host of development review that occurs that never comes before the planning commission. If they don't need a change in zoning, if they don't need a CUP, if their uses are permitted by right, but they're still developing or redeveloping a site, the planning department will review those site development plans for, for, you know, compliance with the zoning ordinance, but also that's our opportunity to make sure that, you know, that development is reflecting the community's goals. So how does that occur? We work with other county departments, the Department of Transportation and Public Works chiefly to review those plans, because in our, in our role as the reviewers and approvers of site development plans, we sort of kick off the permitting process. So before anyone can apply for a permit with Public Works, they typically need a site development plan to show that development. So we often, people start with us, you know, saying, I want to build a new building, how do I do it? Or they'll start with, you know, Public Works assuming they can get a permit and then sort of get kicked back down to us. So we'll see projects all the way from, you know, the birth of someone's dream to, to shovels in the ground sometimes in terms of, you know, participating in the project. So for a little bit of perspective, excuse me, the other thing we do is we review subdivision flats as well. So when folk are subdividing property, consolidating property, adjusting property lines, we also review those documents for compliance with the subdivision ordinance, which is the other development regulation we have besides the zoning ordinance. So to put that into, into perspective, this table shows the site development plans that we bring back to the planning commission. So just like Abby brought that site development plan for the St. Andrews Credit Union, you got, you all saw that as a correspondence item and then it was brought back to you as a site development plan for your review. We do around 20 of those a year. This year, we've done about 14 so far. In contrast, we see a couple, you know, dozens of site development plans every year that we review for what we would call straight zone projects where they don't have a planned district or a special procedure. And then related to that, we, we've seen 39 subdivision flats so far that, that have come in for major subdivisions that can include subdividing a huge lot into dozens of single family homes. It can, it can be commercial subdivisions, lot consolidations, et cetera. And I'm happy to answer any questions, yes, Mr. Elliott.
I have a question to ask you. On subdivisions, in particular, the utilities, electric, what kind of say do we have or do you have when somebody wants to build, say, 200 houses? And we know that the electrical grid cannot handle that. Do we have the right to come in and stop that? I'll give you an example, Eureka, our grid is screwed up bad. It's so far behind and they put all these new subdivisions in and now you get one side of the street will have electric, the other side won't in an outage. And they said that could have been alleviated with smarter planning. Now they say that after the fact.
So I don't know specifically about like electric utilities and like to the example you gave. What happens on the flats that we review, like on the record plat? That's where folk are going to dedicate the easements where those utilities are going to be located. I've not run into something like, like with the utility like you mentioned, but something similar that we've had is, is how the post office serves new subdivisions. So, you know, previously and I, you know, what I always assumed is that everyone had a mailbox. But now because we have so many, you know, meandering streets and a lot of development, the post office has requested that folk install like a mail kiosk. So instead of them delivering to every single house your mail, they go to the kiosk and they just drop all of the mail there and then folk go and pick it up. So it's not quite the same type of service delivery, but there are, there are issues that, that creep up when, you know, a 40 acre lot is turned into many, many, many homes. Any other questions?
No.
So next, in the same way that we are the staff to the planning commission, the planning department is also the staff to the county's Board of Zoning Adjustment. They are a little bit different than other county boards and commissions where, where they don't have a specific charge and a goal that they were forward, trying to forward. They are a reactive body that is semi judicial in that they hear requests for relief from the strict application of the zoning ordinance regulations. So it, the zoning ordinance says, you know, lots in the non-urban shall have a 50 foot front yard setback. Well, if you have a lot in the non-urban that's only 70 feet deep, it's going to be pretty difficult for you to build a house on that property and meet all of those setbacks. So it, when there are instances when your lot has what we would call a hardship or there's an undue burden in using your property, property owners can petition the Board of Zoning Adjustment for relief from those regulations. And where this typically occurs is when someone goes to apply for a building permit and they show they don't meet that regulation, then they're sort of kicked down and say, you know, the only form of relief, the only way you're going to be able to do this is if you petition the Board of Zoning Adjustment and, and demonstrate to them that hardship. So the, the Board of Zoning Adjustment, here's many, many requests, they're up to 62 already this year. They meet every other week and for each of those meetings, Debbie Nesbit, who is Evelyn's counterpart, our planning technician for the Board of Zoning Adjustment, she facilitates, she reviews those applications, gets their agendas together and their notices, posts, you know, notice in the paper, visits the site, does all of that work for the planning commission, or excuse me, for the Board of Zoning Adjustment. And then similarly, Gretchen right now is our staff member who, who chiefly prepares those presentations and then runs the meetings of the Board of Zoning Adjustment. So everything I've talked to, talked about up until this point is what we would call current planning or short range planning, which is the sort of reactive planning that we do to move along, you know, development in St. Louis County. On the converse, there's also long range planning, which is about looking to the future. What do we want our community to, to look like by said points? In this case, let's call it 2050. And then how do we get there in the next 25 years? Through small area plans, corridor studies and whatnot. That's how you break down your comprehensive, your long range goal and accomplish it. So some of the small area studies or corridor studies that the commission may be familiar with, as we haven't produced many recently, are like the sixth county council district community area study. So you'll see in some of your, some of the zoning reports we bring to you where we'll say, we're making this recommendation because the sixth county council district area study says, says X, Y, and Z. So you have your broad, comprehensive, your long range planning document that a group like the planning commission can then use to, to eat away at that, at those goals and incrementally implement those goals. Similarly, the, the planning commission will recall recently adopting the Spanish Lake Land Use Master Plan, which was done by an outside group, but the planning commission still adopted it and made it part of the general plan. So similarly, as development requests come through in the, the Spanish Lake area, we can turn to that plan and say, what are those goals? And how can we forward those goals with the petition that's right in front of us? And then more, more broadly, and as you all know, we are getting ready to embark on a new comprehensive planning process, which will help us reach a more sustainable and equitable St. Louis County by 2050. That's the goal, that's the intent of the plan. And then of import to this group, it is the charge of the planning commission to adopt that document and, and recommend that the, that the county council adopted into ordinance. So that will be a, a long bit of work for all of us and, and, you know, the, the commission will be charged with adopting it. As I mentioned earlier, Wayne was, was there earlier at the kickoff meeting. We met with the, with the team just earlier this morning to do the sort of informal kickoff of that planning process.
Mel?
Mm-hmm.
Someone named, someone chatted, they're trying to get into the meeting, I guess.
A chat.
We're working on it.
Oh, Jacob responded, okay. I'm sorry, thank you.
There's a, right, it sounds like there's someone in the attendees, Mel, who's asking, has the meeting been started? So I'm wondering if there's a technical issue about, is there a button that needed to be pushed to start the streaming of the meeting?
Let me click that button I clicked earlier, but that's, I don't know if you were, what, earlier we were chatting about this webcast function that is on this meeting, but I don't even see it anymore.
Okay.
So yes, that's what we were trying to figure out, but the recording will be on YouTube tomorrow.
Recording will be on YouTube, yes.
Right, so I'm not sure with that, but yes, Gretchen and I are going to figure that out. Let me put my share back on.
I'll send a meeting saying that if they cannot see it, that it will be on YouTube, the upload will be to YouTube tomorrow.
Okay, thanks Jacob.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, is this back up for everyone?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so one of the other, uh, kind of long range planning tasks that the department has is, we are not the staff to the boundary commission, but the boundary commission is a body that hears the jurisdictional requests of municipalities in terms of annexation, incorporation, disincorporation, adjusting boundary lines between municipalities. While we are not their staff, we are the, basically the liaison to the board, to the boundary commission on the county's behalf. So we attend their meetings. We, we provide recommendations on some of their requests for, for what is the impact to the county of that request. Many of you are aware, I, you know, I shared with you last week some information about the ongoing proposed annexation by the city of Manchester. So we have attended a couple of, we've, we've helped host a couple of open houses recently to make sure that the folk affected by that proposal have all of the information needed to, to go to the polls in November. When there isn't a big annexation like that on the, on the boundary commission's agenda, they usually have other, other sorts of actions that we're weighing in on. Jacob, do you have anything you want to add regarding the boundary commission?
No, not unless any of the planning commissioners have questions about it.
So here's Gretchen. Gretchen, there are some good pictures in there, some LinkedIn cover photo contenders for you, I think. Just at the, the open house from last week, talking with some citizens. So, you know, while we're speaking of talking to citizens, day in and day out, we are getting calls from folk, property owners, developers, asking questions about what is my zoning? How can I use my property? You know, can I do this? Can I subdivide this? We also get a lot of calls that have nothing to do with planning, but we really pride ourselves on, on good customer service and really helping people find the answers to their questions, even if that answer isn't inside of the planning department. We also are in a couple of stakeholder groups where we'll meet with other county staff and community stakeholders regarding ongoing issues in their communities. We also attend, the Afton-LeMay Chamber of Commerce has an economic development committee. We're on that committee and we'll share with them ongoing zoning and site plan review matters. And then we also have gone into the schools during community planning month, which is October. You'll hear a little bit more. But we have gone into a couple of different high schools and talked to the, to the students about what planning is as a, as a field and as a possible occupation and also how it, you know, interplays with their, with their daily lives, moving about their community themselves. So we do intend to do that again this fall. Abby's been working on reaching out to some schools so that we can keep doing that work as well.
What was the last stakeholder meeting? What was the issue?
So there are, there are two, um, what's the term?
Like this photograph?
They're, they're recurring stakeholder meetings. There's one made up of, of North County stakeholders and one made up of South County stakeholders. This must be the North County one since the, the chairwoman's in there. Sometimes it centers around problem properties. It's also just a place for, for the non-county folk to share just other general issues or other events or initiatives they've got going on. I would say generally it's, it's probably mostly a sort of code enforcement type discussion. And so we bring in not just the code enforcement people, but folk, you know, from, from the police planning to, to weigh in on a lot of those items to move them along. So one of the other things that we do is, after a subdivision is established, if there's common ground, there's always going to be a homeowners association or a board of trustees. We work with trustees. We'd like to keep a database of trustee contact information where, you know, folks can then call us and say, you know, I live in X, Y, and Z subdivision. I'm trying to get ahold of my trustees, I don't know who they are. We'll check the database and, and share that information with them. We also have different resources that we share with, with trustees, sample documents for them to adapt, to use to welcome new neighbors, issue violations, and then guides for referring to, to county code and, and stuff to sort of break it down to that sort of layperson level. Just last week, I went to a subdivision trustee, trustee meeting up in Castle Point to talk to the, so they actually don't have a board of trustees. to talk to the, so they actually don't have a board of trustees. So one of their goals is to create a community group that can sort of fill, fulfill, fulfill the functions of a, of a homeowners association.
I have a question about the trustees. Is that something that list that you're, you share? If let's say utility is looking to contact, you know, for projects and stuff like that, is that, is that something?
It is, it is a public database. Um, it's not amazingly up to date, but it is something in that, you know, we could share in an instant, instance like that.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. So then, you know, I've just given you a, a whole, a whole host of um, examples of the kind of work that we do. And as we're doing this work, we're always asking ourselves, is this the best way to do it? Is this the most effective way to get this, you know, to provide this service to this, to this resident? Um, so we're always participating in what we call continuous improvement, uh, whether that's process improvement, um, things like amendments to the zoning ordinance that we bring to the planning commission, like the um, changes we just did to the site development plan procedure. That's what we would call continuous improvement. We've run into these stumbling blocks, this is the big picture in our goal, how do we bite, you know, chomp this down into a manageable, manageable change? Um, so some, some big uh, process improvement, continuous improvement we've participated in. Jacob and I attended a, a big workshop earlier this year about the development review pr- uh, process as a whole, all the way from site plan review to, to issuance and of, of an occupancy permit. This is, um, you know, Public Works, Code Enforcement, Transportation, folk from the county executive's office all circled up to say, you know, what are the issues that our constituents are running into when they're trying to, to do development in St. Louis County? So we did a huge, this, it's not this process map, but basically a big flow chart of the process. And then we identified waste or, or those stumbling blocks in the process and then come up with countermeasures for, you know, how can we make this easier? How can we make this more simple and obvious? Um, and then one example of that, that actually came out of that process is we identified um, a, a process that right now the planning department facilitates. We collect escrows for major land disturbance when folks are doing grading. Um, but through this process, we've identified that it, it's really not the best work group for that work to uh, live with. So we're going through a process right now to house that workflow in the appropriate work group. Um, so processes are, um, you know, I've been here six years, I've heard a lot, you know, but this is how we've always do, done it, this is how we do it, but we try to sort of say, you know, tell us why and there is value in that, but that doesn't need to be the only reason we do things a certain way. So I know that was a lot of information, I'm happy to answer any other questions. Um, we're always happy for, for y'all to, you know, come into the department if you ever want to, you know, come in for a day and see what we're doing. We will keep sharing other opportunities for you to come to other county events, um, if that's of interest to y'all, but um, yeah, thanks for listening.
Okay, thank you, Mel.
I'll get to you, Jacob.
Sure, sure. So I know that I had sent out an email to everybody, but I wanted to just bring to your attention two big educational opportunities, um, for, for sort of planning. So the first one is UMSL's Chancellor Certificate in Planning and Zoning, and it is a seven module, so it's a multi-week uh, course, once a week for several hours, um, that covers the most basic foundations of the planning profession, from the legal framework to um, understanding zoning, to understanding comprehensive plans, um, ethics, and how to have, um, how to have effective meetings. So I just want to bring that to everyone's attention. Registration for that program is open now, so if that's something that you wanted to do, or if there were any of the modules that you wanted to just do as one-offs, they do allow you to do one-off modules. So um, just Google this, the UMSL Chancellor Certificate in Planning and Zoning. I know everything is up on that website if that is of interest to you. And also feel free, if anyone is interested, just to email me. I am currently, through the rest of this year, the president of the American Planning Association's uh, St. Louis Metropolitan section, and we are one of the uh, bodies that helps um, run that program. So if you've got any questions, just let me know. I also wanted to bring it to the commission's attention that the American Planning Association's State Conference is uh, in the middle of October. Registration for that is also open, it is in Kansas City this year, um, but it has all kinds of learning opportunities, um, you know, range, you know, ranging all kinds of stuffs in the, in the planning fields. We just wanted to bring those to you if any of those were of, um, were of interest to you.
And then I think we'll probably come back with information about the October luncheon, although I wonder if Todd and Paula, if you all will already be at that October luncheon since it's a, a joint luncheon with the Public Works Association.
Yeah, so the, so the metro section for St. Louis of the American Planning Association, we also do monthly luncheons for just covering whatever is an important planning topic. Um, and this month is an in-person luncheon with, with our colleagues in the, uh, in the Public Works Association. So, um, if anyone has interest on that, just let me know.
I'm being there.
Did you say you'll be there, Paula?
As well.
Yes.
Yep.
Awesome. Okay, so the next thing I want to talk about is an initiative, a project, um, an event that's happening on Friday of this week. It's called Parking Day, and you'll notice that the I-N-G is in parentheses because it's optional. So what is Parking Day? It's a, uh, it's sort of tactical urbanism, if you're familiar with that term. Um, it's a global public participatory, participatory project where people reuse on-street parking spaces for um, public social spaces for people instead of cars. So this is a picture from the very first Parking Day where a group of folk, I think they were in California, um, they, they filled the meter, they paid to use the spot, but instead of parking a vehicle there, they put down some turf, some seating and a tree and called it a park, um, and left it up for people to enjoy, um, in, instead of a vehicle being, being in that spot. So we are doing this at St. Louis County in front of the, the government center here in Clayton. Um, right now, it's not on-street parking in the same way, but we do have this sort of excess no-parking striped loading zone. And if you've ever crossed Central Avenue on the way to one of the meetings, you know that it's just a really, really, really wide amount of pavement. So we've identified this portion in front of our doors, sort of close to the crosswalk, um, as the spot where we want to do a pop-up parklet. So we are setting up this parklet for Friday, September 15th, which is Parking Day across the world. It's, it's a global phenomenon, so there's actually going to be one um, outside of Blueprint Coffee, I think, on Delmar, and then there's gonna be another one in the area I can find as well. We're going to set it up for Friday, and then we're actually gonna leave ours up for a few days because, um, first of all, it's just such a great spot to sort of revitalize, but then throughout the warm months, County Parks does what they call Wonderful Wednesday, which is basically they, they do a hot dog lunch here at the county government center. So we're gonna keep it up through Wonderful Wednesday, that way people can see, um, see and read about Parking Day and also use the space during, during that event. Um, excuse me. So you can see the red area that, that I've marked sort of rotates here. So north is to the left. So we are going to use basically concrete barriers to protect the space and then essentially just introduce seating options. So we're gonna have a bench, a picnic table, and then we're going to have um, potted trees as well. And then we're gonna have some programming throughout the time that the parklet is up. We're gonna do a pop-up job fair, um, where we have folks from administration personnel come and talk about, um, employment opportunities with the county. So this, I'm just gonna take you through a little simulation. Uh, this is the area outside the county government center right now. So the first thing we do is we'll sort of mark off the area to be, to be greenified. We actually have some fake turf that we're gonna put down to make it really feel park-like. We're gonna have some signage, um, and some information so people know what they're seeing, what they're in, um, and why we're doing it. We're gonna add those potted plants to, to greenify and give that park-like feel. We'll add those seating areas and some of our programming, and then once we've got the people in it, it's a park. So we are really excited to do it, it's just sort of, um, it really is pop-up, but we are really excited to sort of demonstrate the, a different relationship that we can have with the street on such a prominent location. We just get so much foot traffic, um, that we thought it'd be nice to have a sort of different, different relationship with the street, different appearance for our, um, our customers. So I encourage you all, if you're in Clayton this weekend, or if you, you know, have some free time to come by, get a coffee, come sit in the parklet, bring your lunch. I'm gonna undock my laptop, I'll probably be down there all day, uh, on Saturday, trying to, to get folks to come hang out, so. Um, and then if it catches on, we'll do it again next year. So happy to answer any questions and would be really happy to see you all there.
And you said Wonderful Wednesday, but it's, those hot dogs are like really good, so the commissioner, if you're ever looking for an inexpensive, exactly, all beef frank lunch, um, those Wonderful Wednesdays at the county building are open to anybody, um, and we always, we always partake, so, you know, always feel, if you're around Clayton and you're just like hankering for a hot dog on that day, do stop by.
Five dollars gets you a hot dog, soda, and a bag of chips.
Okay.
So Wonderful Wednesday is the 20th, but the parklet will be up the 15th through the 20th.
Sounds good.
Oops. Okay.
So many of you know, or all of you know, um, we had to, we had to say goodbye to a beloved staff member, Ashra. Um, she has, she left the county, but we get to say, we get to say hello, um, to a new member of the team. So I'd like to introduce to the commission, our newest planner here in the Department of Planning, her name is Abiola Adesanya. Um, and so Abiola has recently finished her master's degree at uh, University of, excuse me, was Iowa or Iowa, Iowa State? Thank you. Iowa, it's like I knew was in Iowa. Um, at Iowa State, um, and she uh, is a, is our newest planner. She has experience doing transportation planning and significant experience in GIS. Um, and she is a, um, she's not a, a, a US citizen, but she comes to us from Nigeria, so we're really, uh, we're excited about, um, welcoming her into the department and welcoming her to St. Louis. Um, she's been here about a week, so, uh, and this is her first planning commission meeting. So, uh, Abiola, would you like to say hello to the commissioners?
Hi, everyone. Good evening. Uh, my name is Abiola Adesanya, and I'm excited to join the department. I have about four years of experience in urban planning before joining the St. Louis County. And um, outside of work, I love to explore the internet because as an international student, um, as an international student, then we have a lot of information that you need to strive in the US, so I love to explore the internet. And um, I'm eager to get to know all of you and collaborate on specific projects with you all. Thank you very much.
Hey, welcome. Welcome.
Welcome.
Well.
And yeah, we're just thrilled to have you here, Abiola, so I'll echo that as well. Um, the last sort of set of items relate to the sort of closeout of the year, so up on the screen right now and in your agenda packet was the Q4 meeting schedule. Um, we do have five Mondays in October, uh, so you'll see there's gonna be a sort of a big gap, but we have the opportunity to fill that gap because we, well, I'll let Jacob. Jacob, do you want to talk about the comp plan update?
Sure. So, um, all of you know that we are getting ready to uh, go into a comprehensive planning process, and today we had staff, um, from around multiple county departments in the county executive. Um, we had a very informal first kickoff meeting with our team. So, uh, our team with AE Comm and their sub consultants, um, we met to discuss sort of the next 90 days of what it looks like as we get through this process. Um, and as we finalize, we haven't, we're, we're just trying to cross a couple things off on the contract, but I expect to have the contract signed this week. So one of the very first things that the team is working on is what is called the Detailed Engagement Plan. And the Detailed Engagement Plan is exactly what it sounds like. It will be the document that explains all of the ways and all of the times that they will be going out to the community dur- during and throughout this process. And so what we want to do is we want to couple a presentation of the Detailed Engagement Plan with their first in-person formal meeting with all of us here at St. Louis County, um, sometime in mid to late October. So we would like to have a, an additional meeting in October in person where they can meet everyone in person and describe and explain the Detailed Engagement Plan as we get started. Um, they will be here for, with us probably for two days because I expect the, the AE Comm team to meet, um, with uh, multiple officials, uh, elected and appointed officials with all of us here at the county, um, and get us really, really started, uh, on that, on that. So I just wanted to put that on your all's radar. I don't know which Monday in October it will be, um, but we will, um, as soon as we know, coordinate to ensure that, that we get that in-person meeting with the planning commission, uh, to meet the consultants as well as to, um, really dive into the Detailed Engagement Plan.
Okay.
And then last, um, as I mentioned, I think when I was talking about us going into the schools, um, we do that in October, this time of year in the fall, because October is Community Planning Month. You know, I, I realize I don't know why it's October, um, if there's a rationale behind it, I'll find out. Um, but the county council is, is actually going to adopt a resolution, uh, you know, acknowledging that October is Community Planning Month, and they're going to do so at their regular meeting on September the 26th. So if any of you would like to be there for that, um, that, you know, is it just a regular council meeting where it will, that, where they will present that resolution? I think that is the...
Is that it?
...of for the good of the order. So the next time we will meet will be a week from today for in-person public hearing on the 18th.
Okay. Uh, anyone else have anything to add? With that, we need a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
We have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Seeing no one, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Eyes have it nine zero, and we'll see you all next week.
See you in a week.
Have a nice, everybody.
Bye.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.